Good evening. Welcome to Georgetown County Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 10th. The time is now 5:31 PM. And this meeting of Georgetown County Councils being called to order. We'll ask Consular Everett Carolina to give us the invocation and to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come together this day asking for guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Allow us to grow closer as elected officials in nurturing the bonds of our communities. Strengthen and bless this country as we go through these challenging times in America and the atrocities currently experienced in Israel. Our prayers are for mankind throughout the world. Let us continue to emphasize each citizen's responsibilities for protecting and defending our Constitution, which is a basis for this country's heritage and foundation. Continue to remind us that all we do as stewards over the land is for the greater glory of you in service to humanity and progress in Georgetown County. Continued peace and blessings to all in our county, state, country, and worldwide in your mighty name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Consular Carolina. Note for the record also that we do have a quorum present. We'll move on down to the approval of our agenda. Prior to approving the agenda, there's been a request to move item nine, Resolutions Proclamations, up in front of public comments, so be moved to item, right under item four, prior to item five. Is there a motion to move?
So move.
We have a motion by Consular Carolina for the amendment to the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consular Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. So now we move on down to the approval of the agenda with the noted amendment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the noted amendment? It's been moved by all councilors. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consular Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move down to our special reports and presentations, our Non-Spot Profit Spotlight, American Rivers. Yes, Cheryl, is that Gail? Gail. Okay. Floor is yours.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Cheryl Kell. I'm American Rivers Southeast Conservation Associate Director. I would like to introduce you to American Rivers and the work of our organization. American Rivers is a premier national organization working to protect and restore all rivers from remote mountain streams to urban waterways. Slide two. Rivers provide our drinking water, grow our food, and sustain our spirits. Today, our rivers are at risk as never before from climate change, pollution, drought, flooding, and loss of natural habitat. Nothing short of our health and safety are at stake. American Rivers works alongside communities that are hardest hit as we champion a movement to protect and restore the rivers on which we all depend. American Rivers is championing a national effort to protect and restore all rivers. Healthy rivers provide people and nature with clean, abundant water and natural habitat. For 50 years, American River staff, supporters, and partners have shared a common belief: life depends on rivers. Slide three. Life needs rivers. People need rivers for clean drinking water. Fish and wildlife need rivers to thrive. Our economy would literally grind to a halt without rivers and reliable water supplies. Rivers make life possible when a river is healthy. All life prospers. Wildlife needs cool, free-flowing streams, especially as climate change makes their homes hotter and drier. Cities and communities get all or most of their water from rivers, and without the clean water we get from the rivers, hospitals would be unclean and unsafe, and much of our manufacturing and energy production would fail completely. Rivers make life worth living. And nationally, river recreation economy is worth $97 billion. There are certainly more reasons than not to focus on protecting our rivers and to take necessary steps that will ensure the health of all who depend on them. But first, we have to clearly identify the problems and the threats in order to develop solutions. Slide four. The threat: climate change. Water is the primary way the effects of climate change will be felt. And that's based on a UN water organization. The recent years are hottest on record, we can all attest to that. 700 million people will be displaced by drought by 2030. Extreme rain will increase 400%. Unpredictability impacts farming, water supply for communities, as well as fish and wildlife. So it's obvious we are beginning to see the changes that will continue into the future and make it that much harder for communities to thrive unless action is taken. Partnering with state and local agencies is a crucial step, necessary to build resilience plans for communities and the watersheds we live in. Slide five, please. So the other threat is water quality. Rivers that are impaired threaten the health of all that depends on it. Recent reports identify the need to limit fish consumption from our rivers and even for recreational use of our waterways throughout the state. Water quality is tied to responsible land use practices, such as ensuring riverine buffers, protecting our wetlands, and using smart land practices. All of these measures will help to keep rivers from being degraded in many ways. It also provides for methods of cleaning our water. If you think of wetlands, which are the filters for our waterways, we are fortunate here to have an abundance of them in Georgetown County and throughout the state. Slide seven. So our solutions. American Rivers has developed a 50-state strategy, and this strategy provides a path forward to addressing critical water issues at the state level where much of our water governance takes place, and in part due to federal delegation of authorities. This non-federal approach to scaling provides a path forward at times where federal government may not be amenable to rivers and clean water policy changes. Additionally, we recognize that there are regional and local issues which create the need for the development of strategies that are meaningful to the communities we serve. The overall preface is working across the policy lines of federal, state, and local governments to ensure that all people have healthy rivers and clean water. The three existential crises of climate change, racial injustice, and biodiversity loss are of a scale and urgency that requires greater breadth and speed of impact. While federal and local policy change is important, much water management is left up to the states. Therefore, we must engage strategically at this scale to ensure healthy rivers and clean water for all. We can achieve this by protecting healthy ecosystems, in one way removing dams to restore river health, protecting wild and free-flowing rivers, supporting thriving communities, keeping floodwaters in rivers and out of homes, investing in natural infrastructure to support health and safety, defending clean water, advocating for common sense policies that keep our water clean and safe, helping cities use and supply water wisely, advocating for flexible approaches to using storing, managing water during times of drought and flood. Slide eight. Saving rivers isn't a choice, it is a matter of survival. Climate change is intensifying droughts, floods, and weather unpredictability. Freshwater ecosystems are some of the most imperiled on earth. Less than 1% of rivers are protected as wild and scenic. 90,000 dams exist in US rivers. Communities need new solutions to deal with crushing droughts and devastating floods. People of color, low-income communities, and indigenous people who will be the hardest hit by the climate crisis have a critical role in making decisions that will shape their future. Some of the recent events have uncovered a disparity in access to clean water and green space, public health, and safety issues, which equal quality of life. Slide nine. What makes us successful? We're a group of experts with a commitment to collaboration and equity. Industry and grassroots leaders gather with us throughout the conservation network. We advocate for policy change, creating this change at the federal, state, and local levels. And we operate a pragmatic strategy, proving 50 years of impact. I'd like to thank the county council for allowing me the time to share American Rivers' work, and I really look forward to continued partnerships here in Georgetown County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kell. Any comments or questions from council for Ms. Kell? Hearing them, thank you. Thank you for all you do for Georgetown County and for our rivers. We'll move on down to resolutions and proclamations. Madam Clerk, please note for the record that I will be recusing myself from any participation in discussion regarding resolution number 23-32. I will now turn the chair over to our Vice Chair, Consular Lily Johnson, who will lead the discussion and vote regarding that particular ordinance, or resolution, I'm sorry, resolution. Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we have report, Ms. Christian?
Good evening. Before you is a resolution to name a portion of a Georgetown County road in honor of Johnny Morant. Mr. Morant was elected by voters to the office of county council in 1993. He served with integrity and compassion such that he gained the trust and confidence of Georgetown County citizens. He was reelected and maintained the office for District Seven until 2018. Before you, resolution 2332 outlines Georgetown County Council's support and efforts in requesting the General Assembly's consideration of designating a road as defined within the proposed resolution as Johnny Morant Highway in honor of Johnny Morant. The resolution, of course, is lengthy. I'll be glad to answer any questions for you if you so desire.
If there are any questions, the vice chair will recognize a motion for adoption of resolution number 23-32.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, lady. I make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. Mr. Morant's work for this county has been tremendous. He's been a total asset to the development and moving forward of projects here in Georgetown County, and the recognition warrants this project be named in his honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have two seconds. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Vote is unanimous. At this time, we will have the resolution read, and then we acknowledge the presence of the family members.
Resolution number 2332. Whereas Johnny Morant made distinct contributions to the progression and amelioration of Georgetown County, and he is recognized as one of Georgetown County's strongest advocates. And whereas Johnny Morant was first elected to Georgetown County Council in 1993, representing county council District Seven, this was the beginning of his leadership and service to the citizens of Georgetown County. And whereas throughout his tenure on Georgetown County Council, Johnny Morant worked diligently to ensure that the enhancement and provision of county services and through his efforts significant contributions were made. He was instrumental in the development of a long-term strategic plan which incorporated citizens' groups in addressing dire infrastructure needs within Georgetown County. And whereas this capital plan spanned 20 years and outlined adequate project funding throughout the plan, included the design and construction of the Georgetown County Judicial Center, an 80,000-square-foot modern complex to address courtroom space and security issues, a multi-story Crown Jewel Airport Terminal building, replacing a previous terminal constructed in 1978, as well as airport runway expansions to accommodate corporate jet craft previously unable to utilize Georgetown County's airport, the purchase of property and design of the Carol Ashmore-Campbell Marine Complex, which would ultimately bring several national fishing tournaments to Georgetown County, state-of-the-art regional recreational facilities, the erection of three modern library facilities on the Waukamalnet Carvers Bay and in the Sandpits Santee area, the addition of numerous fire EMS stations throughout Georgetown County, including construction of a new headquarters facility for both county fire districts, and advanced E911 Emergency Operations Center. And the projects noted are not all-inclusive. And whereas Johnny Morant was held in highest esteem by his peers exhibiting high standards of professionalism, such that he served as chairman and/or vice chairman of Georgetown County Council for 22 of his 25 years as a member of Georgetown County Council. During this timeframe, he worked with multiple colleagues and numerous representatives of each council district, all of which cast their individual vote of confidence to elect him to these positions of trust. And whereas every citizen of Georgetown County has directly benefited from the contributions of Johnny Morant, he exemplified the strength held by pillars of any community and is a guidepost for those who followed. Therefore, be it resolved that Georgetown County Council, in a meeting duly assembled and in unanimous consent and support, does humbly request the General Assembly's consideration of designating Johnny Morant Highway in his honor, such being defined as Exodus Drive or South Carolina Highway S-264, beginning with its intersection at North Fraser Street, spanning approximately 7.97 miles, and ending at a second intersection with the same. Furthermore, Georgetown County Council supports any and all efforts of the legislative delegation to accomplish this endeavor. So shall it be this 10th day of October in the year of our Lord 2023.
Thank you. A legacy that's left by Johnny McRant, and we acknowledge the presence of his wife and other family members, and we ask Mr. Louis Morant to return. And we ask Mr. Louis Morant to return. Meeting is now back in the hands of our Chair, Mr. Louis Morant.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and thank you, Consulors, for your understanding and patience. We will move on down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that at the expiration, please note the monitor, because the time is being counted down on the monitor, at the expiration of your time, we ask that you conclude your statements. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comments this evening?
We have eight speakers signed up tonight, and they will each have three minutes, as you said, Mr. Chairman. First speaker is Chris Spiner.
Hello, everyone. I am Chris Spiner, whom you should all know by now. I am here again to speak out about the proposed changes to the boat landing ordinance. Let me tell you, our thousands of commercial boaters have been riding the emotional roller coaster throughout our county during this journey. I personally was ecstatic when I saw there was a proposed change on tonight's agenda for the first reading. Then I read the proposed change. I am thrilled that the smaller commercial six-pack boats will be allowed to utilize all of our county landings, but I am deeply saddened that larger tour boats have been denied access. I feel like this council has just decided to take the easy way out because there are other ways to protect our county's tourism revenue stream. Your decision to totally cut out the larger tour boats will cut Georgetown County tourism revenue by 10,000-plus tourists that visit our county yearly, tourists that help support our local small businesses, shops, restaurants, places for lodging, and much more. This change will also stop the growth of our future tourism industry by not allowing larger Coast Guard inspected boats to operate on our pristine waters. Why did the county spend $6.6 million on Carol Campbell Marine Complex, which is the largest public boat landing in our state? It is very underutilized by the public and is mostly used for fishing tournaments just a few times a year. It has 200 parking spaces, six boat slum ramps, and plenty of courtesy docking. Please consider this complex as a solution for these tour boats, no longer than 40 feet, and maximum passengers are 40 plus their crew. It's a simple solution that will accommodate everyone's needs and not just some. Let's all remember that Georgetown County has the most waterways in our state, with five rivers, the intercoastal waterway, and Winyaw Bay. Our tourists can visit and get out on our beautiful waters and spread the word about their amazing visit to Georgetown County. We can encourage preservation and conservation of our pristine waters. Everyone deserves the chance to utilize our 25 public boat landings, not just some. Thank you for your time.
Joseph Baxter?
Good evening, guys. How y'all doing tonight? Hope you're having a good night, day out there. My name is Joseph Baxter. I am the owner of Baxter's Brew House Inn, South Carolina's first bed and brew right around the corner. And of course, we love tourists. Georgetown County loves tourists, too. They come in and spend a lot of money. Two reasons, top two reasons tourists come to town. Number one is history. Number two is the water. Here to speak about the commercial boat landings. I understand, you know, those smaller boats. Some of the boat landings in Georgetown County are pretty small. The landings, there isn't a lot of parking spots either. But Carol Campbell, it's a pretty big spot. There's a lot of, there's a lot of parking spots. I'd like for, and I emailed everybody earlier today, by the way. Thank you, Clint, for replying to my email. I really appreciate it. I'd like to see an addendum added to allow larger vehicles at Carol Campbell. Forty, you know, plus passengers, 40 feet, whatever it is. But there should be a restriction at that area. It's very large. It can accommodate a lot of boats. Georgetown County owns the port now. And I'm sure in a few years, they want to harbor some of this business and get it to move over into that port where they can move all of their commercial activity, which I think would be a smart idea for the county to make this addendum and add it to this new article. So thank you very much. You guys have a great evening.
Alec Tooten?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the chance to speak to you about the boat landing ordinance here in Georgetown County. The ordinance as written is a good start. My humble opinion, it does not go far enough. I don't think we want or need unlimited access. If we had that, we would have casino boats here loading 100 to 300 people to go offshore. And that is not what we want. The last few years, I have been on two guided kayak excursions on the Petey and Waukamaw River area. One trip had 15 to 18 people. The other had 22 and 25. These included a naturalist and a guide, both originated from boat landings on Petey River. I have also been historic tours and plantations on the Black River, Petey River, and the Waukamaw River. These boats all have some passengers. One of these was sponsored by the Gibbs Museum out of Charleston. We have about 45 passengers. The captain and a guide are narrators. This type of trips cannot run with a limit of six passengers. Let's make this ordinance real and not choke off this type of tourism. Set a limit of 50 people on the boats. Let kayaks use the smaller upriver landings close to where they are going. And the larger boats use Carol Campbell or similar landings. This would be a livable compromise. Thank you for your time, and this is the first time I've ever spoken on three minutes. Thank you.
Cecilia Daly?
Thank you for hearing my comment, council. My name is Cecilia Daly. I'm a botanist. I was born in Charleston. I have a master's at the Citadel. I've worked on the Black River in Georgetown and Williamsburg County since 2017. Specifically, I do floral inventory work. So I have a pretty clear idea of a lot of the species that grow in our region. I want to address some of the important large tree species that define the character of our region that are missing from the protected tree list on the tree ordinance. Oak species are numerous, hugely diverse, with incredible wildlife value. Quercus alba, the white oak, quercus phellus, willow oak, quercus michoyai, the swamp chestnut oak, quercus lorata, the overcup oak, quercus simulis, the swamp post oak, is tracked by the state, so a potentially rare or impaired oak species. There's numerous other oak species on drier sites, including quercus stolata, the post oak, quercus pagoda, the cherry bark oak. Caria species are numerous as well. Caria aquatica, the water hickory, caria tomentosa, mocker nut, caria cordiformis, bitter nut, caria miris tissiformis, the nutmeg hickory, another rare caria species, a rare track species. Vegas grandifolia, the American beech, a beautiful, long-lived, disease-free species that supports highly specialized plant community here. Many rare uncommon plants found associated with it, usually growing on slopes. Allmuss americana, this species is really under pressure, so any large specimens really need to be preserved. Allmuss alata, a bit smaller, the winged elm, also a great tree. Fraxinus profunda, the pumpkin ash, is a huge tree. The celtus species, the sugar berry and the hackberry, also under a lot of pressure. When I see large ones of those, I really want to see those preserved. Other species growing in aquatic conditions include Nissa aquatica, water tubalo, Nissa biflora, swamp gum, glidizia aquatica, water locust, planera aquatica, the planar tree, platinus occidentalis, the sycamore. And then a bottomless species, Alexopaca. I'm fighting for that one, too, American holly. Pinus pellustrus, long leaf, I support protection of that and other pine species other than lobolli. So I urge you to reach out to SCDNR, perhaps Keith Bradley, Eric Ungberg. These people would be glad to review this information. I'd like to see scientific names included on the tree ordinance as well, so we can be very specific about the species that are being protected. There's a lot of great botanists in this state that would love to help with this species list. Thank you.
Clarissa Tooten?
Good evening. My name is Clarissa Tooten, and I'm back to speak about commercial use of public boat ramps. I'm very happy that you have an amendment on the agenda that works for our citizens and businesses, at least some of them. However, we are forgetting about the larger tour boats that have been operating on our waterways for years. This amendment should not work just for a select group of our local businesses, but for all of them. Tourism is important, and it does matter, regardless of your personal belief about boats on the waterways. The largest tour boat based in our county, if I'm correct, I believe it holds about 40 passengers. If you consider one tour a day from May to September, which is the peak season for eco-tourism in this area, that's 153 days. So 40 passengers a day, 6,120 passengers. And assume they each spend about $20 on lunch or dinner. That means that you are getting $122,400 of revenue generated in our local businesses in just that five months. Now, if you look at the fact that we have multiple of these tour boats, about three or four, all having the same maximum capacity, you are looking at about $500,000 of tourism generated just from these tour boats alone, not on the boat, but in our local businesses in that five-month span, so not even the full year. Also, the benefits to the conservation of our natural ecosystems is vital to the community becoming educated, much like the American Rivers Association, I believe. Love that presentation. But simply put, you cannot protect something nobody knows or cares about. My first time on Winyaw Bay, and I've lived here my whole life, was at 16, when my grandparents took me on one of these tour boats. We have one of the most vital ecosystems right outside of our back door. For example, the only brackish water turtle in the world lives in our estuary, the diamondback terrapin. Most people don't even know that this species exists, much less that it was exploited for both its carapace and its meat. They are considered a high-priority species, but so few people know of its existence. There are many similar examples that I could give to y'all today. However, the point stands, people must be educated on the environment if we hope to prevent coastal urbanization from destroying it over time. Carol Campbell Boat Landing would be a perfect solution as it is very rarely ever full unless we have tournaments. Even if each guest drove separate, we would still be able to fit 180 boats with trailers in this parking lot. Additionally, there is plenty of courtesy docking to allow for quick loading and departure. So while I do appreciate all that y'all have done to work towards a good compromise, I think that there's just a few things that we could change to make it work for everybody. Thank y'all.
Monica Wayland?
Hi, I'm Monica Wayland with the South Carolina Environmental Law Project, and I'll be speaking about the tree ordinance. The proposed amendments create different requirements based on whether we're addressing occupied or unoccupied parcels in rural or urban areas. Notably, in rural areas, the changes contain no safeguards for occupied lots. As a result, current residents in these rural areas will remain entirely unaffected by the alterations to the fining mechanism. The impact will primarily fall upon those who intend to purchase or already own lots with plans to construct homes. Those with the financial means to build will unlikely face a significant burden from these fines, especially given the fact that it costs about $300 per square foot to build. Additionally, it's important to note that even before the start of the construction on a lot, individuals are required to obtain a building permit and also a tree permit. The fine only pertains to those who choose to circumvent the permit process and engage in the legal removal of trees. Understandably, there is some resistance to the changes stemming from concerns about potential financial hardships that individuals may face as a result. However, it's essential to note, again, that existing homeowners in rural areas are entirely unaffected by this ordinance. Regardless, we should not throw out the proposed changes due to this relatively narrow hypothetical situation. If this is truly a concern, I would strongly encourage the county council to consider some sort of hardship provision or process. This provision could allow residents to request a waiver of fines in cases where they can demonstrate genuine financial hardship, thereby striking a balance between tree protection and the well-being of our community members. Lastly, our viewpoint is that the ordinance should extend protection to all trees within the size limits in occupied lots of urban areas. It's disheartening to see valuable trees with years and years of growth being removed, especially when they could have been preserved and had that lot remain unoccupied. Thank you for your time and attention.
Dwayne Draper?
The AC is certainly working this evening. I'm Dwayne Draper with Keep It Green. In reviewing the agenda for tonight's meeting, it was interesting to note that the amended tree ordinance, approved at second reading at the last county council meeting, was not listed for a third reading tonight. Instead, it was listed as deferred. There was some consternation at last meeting expressed about the $500 per inch fine and the two-year ban on issuance of permits for properties where trees were cut without permission. There was also discussion about possibly revising some language or definitions to bring to third reading. The tree ordinance is not an us versus them issue. If anything, it's an us versus the trees issue. It shouldn't be divisive, and it's not cultural. Lots of us have generational respect for our natural resources and concerns about doing the right thing for our natural resources and for sustainable and resilient community. County Attorney Watson correctly stated that the old ordinance did not have any teeth for improper removal of protected or grand trees, and that the prior fine structure was simply a cost of doing business to developers. We can't continue kicking a good ordinance down the road because of one-off situations. Perhaps an additional layer of protection against improper removal of protected and grand trees would be to require professional tree services request proof of required permits prior to cutting any trees on a property subject to fines for noncompliance. This would provide more oversight and protection to property owners who may not be aware of the details of the tree ordinance and its accompanying penalties. In addition, it will be incumbent upon the county to widely publicize and educate the public about the revised ordinance to eliminate the possibility of making mistakes. I would like to offer strong support for maintaining the revised. I would like to offer strong support for maintaining the revised $500 per inch penalty for improper removal of protected and grand trees, as well as the two-year moratorium on issuance of permits to further develop properties. If exceptions need to be granted based on unique circumstances, there is a process to do so. But again, clear communication and education about the revised ordinance should be a priority for the county to avoid future mishaps. Thank you.
Erin Donmoyer.
Good evening, council. My name is Erin Donmoyer. I work as the riverkeeper for the Black and Sand Pit Watersheds with Winyaw Rivers Alliance. I'm also a resident of Georgetown County, District 5, in the north corner along the Great PD River. I live on the land where my ancestors began farming in the 1700s. I have over 15 years of experience working as a scientist, a botanist, and within the conservation field. I also personally manage the timber tracts on my family land, and I'm here to speak in support of the tree ordinance and to suggest expansion of the ordinance for greater protections. I applaud the protections outlined in the urban overlay, the protections for grand trees, and the addition of the imperiled southeastern long-leaf pine. As it's written in the rural overlay, the circumstance in which a protected tree would actually be protected is rather slim. I do not believe rural occupied single-family parcels should be exempt. Even as someone who manages timberlands myself, I don't believe timbering should be exempt, as it clearly puts a higher value on human economic benefit than the environment in which we live, a misstep humans have notoriously faltered on for millennia. I would recommend scientific plant names be considered for inclusion, as common names are notoriously confused between species. Most importantly, I do not see the scientific reasoning behind taking a species-by-species approach to native tree protections. It's not the way an ecosystem works, and these selections don't appear to have taken into account some very important biological considerations. I wish I had time to tell you all the reasons so many more than seven species should be on the list. Although uncommon, if there are any American elm in excess of 10 inches, they may hold rare genetics that are resistant to Dutch elm disease, and they should not only be preserved, but reported and studied. Locally, American beech forests are well-documented zones for high species diversity and unique plant communities. They're an extremely important species to protect. Tubalow gum, a dominant bottomland hardwood species in our swamps, acts as filters for water quality and excess water storage during flood events, just as cypress do. I ask who decided what species to protect and not to protect. I urge the council to approve the tree ordinance, but also to seek the advisement of a local botanist for consideration of species before this document is approved. In a landscape where the remaining forest is largely a monoculture of a single species grown for timber, loblawli pine, I suggest a quote from the book, "Looking for Long Leaf: The Rise and Fall of an American Forest." The loss of diversity is something that ought to concern people. If we narrowed down the list of acceptable species only to those that can tolerate humans, we'll end up with rats, cockroaches, and house birds, which makes the world a horrible place for humans to live in. Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for your comments. We move on down to our consent agenda. There's a matter on the consent agenda which has been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. That's the adoption of our 2024 meeting schedule. We move down to our public hearings. We have a public hearing regarding ordinance number 23-32, amendment of the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget ordinance. Those of you who wish to speak regarding ordinance number 23-32, the floor is not open for comments. See no one speaking there, too. The floor, public hearing section is now closed. We move on down to appointments to boards and commissions. Counselor Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Ms. Crystal Dickerson, a recent retiree from Sandy Cooper as a water and chemicals analyst, who's expressed her desire to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. She's been very active in her community in our district in advocating for athletic activities, not only in our community, but also throughout the county. I believe she will be a total asset to that commission, and I make the recommendation or consideration to place her on this board.
We have a motion from Counselor Carolina for the appointment of Crystal Dickerson to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Dickerson. We move down to our third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 23-30. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is an amendment to Section 611, the G C District, and Article 21, regulating our designated overlay zone to provide additional requirements for self-storage facilities or mini warehouses. We have not had any changes since we last discussed this at second reading, and as a reminder, we made the following changes at that September 26 meeting. We are prohibiting these storage facilities in the Wakamaw Net Commercial Corridor overlay zone, and as a reminder, that's 500 feet on either side of Highway 17 from the bridge up to the Ori County line. We also added some conditions that will apply to self-storage facilities throughout the county. Those include the buildings must be located 100 feet from a principal residential structure, a Level 4 landscape buffer must be installed around the entire perimeter of the site, and the building coverage is limited to 40% of the site. We also enacted pending ordinance at the last meeting, so these protections are currently in place officially since then. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any question from council floor, Ms. Richardson? Is there a motion for approval of ordinance number 23, adoption of ordinance number 23-30?
They're moved.
Moved by Counselor McCall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to our second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 23-32, amendment of the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget ordinance. Madam Administrator.
I'm pinch hitting tonight. This is the annual rollover ordinance of projects that are in progress. The project ordinance appropriates the funding from the 23 budget to the FY24 budget, so the projects can be completed. The total across all funds is slightly more than $9 million. Majority of the projects are concentrated in road improvement, capital projects, environmental services, and the stormwater fund. Staff requests that the FY24 budget be amended and a motion to include the tax be added since first reading was by title only. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have some for me.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Are there any questions for Madam Administrator, counsel? No? Is there a motion for a second reading approval of ordinance number 23-32?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McCall. Any discussion? Is there a motion to amend to incorporate the tax since it was not included in the first reading?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on back to the original motion, which included the amendment. Is there any discussion regarding the amended motion, the amended main motion, I should say? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Thank you.
We move down to our first reading of ordinances, which will be read into the record by title only. Ordinance number 23-32, to rezone approximately 2.3 acres of property located at the corner of Trinity Road and Sierra Drive, identified as TMS number 03-0450-024-05-01, from Forest Agricultural to one and a half acre residential. Ordinance number 23-34, to amend the future land use map for a 6.09 acre parcel located on the end of Oak Ridge Lane in the Sampson Community of Georgetown, identified as TMS number 01-0425-043-22-03, from medium to low-density residential. Ordinance number 23-35, an ordinance to rezone approximately 6.09 acres located off Oak Ridge Lane in the Sampson Community, identified as TMS number 01-0425-043-22-03, from Village 10,000 square feet residential to Forest Agricultural. Ordinance number 23-36, an ordinance to amend the Georgetown County Conference of Plan to add the new residency element. Ordinance number 23-37, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan for Georgetown County to add the revised community facilities element. Ordinance number 23-38, an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Section 6-3 of the Georgetown County Court of Ordinances pertaining to public boat landing regulations. We move down to our reports to counsel. Mr. Ackerman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm here tonight to do something a little unusual. I'd like to request the creation of a new position, and I think it's very important to understand that we are not asking for an additional position, just a new position titled. We find ourselves, not unlike every other governmental entity surrounding us, with an extreme shortage of trained heavy equipment operators. We currently have with operators and the crew leaders, just in our public works and landfill operations, about 26 total positions that require skilled heavy equipment operation. Of those 26 positions, we have five vacancies. So what we would like to do is take one of the current HEO positions and create an HEO apprentice position, so we wouldn't be asking for a new position, just re-titling of a current allotted slot. So out of the 26 folks, or 26 positions that we have, we have five vacancies, and we've been trying to fill those forever and a day. We have little to no success. We are not in a budgetary position to compete with not only the surrounding private market bill, but with surrounding governmental entities. So we find ourselves behind the eight ball, and if we don't do something different, we can't keep doing business as we've always been doing business. We have to, kind of like we did in the fire service, grow our own. So we're looking for folks who are interested in learning the skill of heavy equipment operation, and then we are going to start a training program, an apprenticeship program, where they will receive on-the-job training, periodic evaluations, and once they become proficient, and they will be tested. Director Funny and I have put a lot of work into this, and they have some guidance through their Public Works Association with how the testing and proficiency levels can be met. So once they are deemed proficient, then they would move up into that official heavy equipment operator position. And in the meantime, we're going to try to restructure the entire way we do look at heavy equipment operators. Our top-tier operator currently is an HEO 3, which requires a Class A CDL driver's license and eight years' experience and proficiency demonstrated to be an HEO. We're going to lose a lot of people before that eight years comes up. So we're going to, we've kind of modeled this after some surrounding counties, and basically what we'll do is restructure and have four levels, and it'll be very simple, easy to understand. A Level 1 equipment operator has one year's experience, a Level 2 has two, a Level 3 and 4 has four years' experience, and so on. Now, there are different proficiency tests that they have to pass and different licensing. For example, in order to be a Class HEO 2 level, you'd have to have a Class B CDL license, and to move to a Level 3 or a Level 4, you'd have to have a Class A, which is important for moving equipment around. If I've ever seen a bulldozer on the back of the truck, you can't do it with a Class B license, you have to have a Class A. So we're trying to change the game here a little bit and try to get ahead of the curve. We've got some folks interested, and once we can put out for an apprenticeship program, that kind of opens the doors, you know, have a wider pool of people to choose from, and then we can train them in-house, get them going, they'll still be doing some work, and this is our kind of first step to solving our problem. Yes, sir. I knew you had, I have been talking just so you couldn't ask a question, because I've seen it on your face.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
A couple of questions. Well, the CDL requirements, Class A for the operators, do, are we handling that in-house? Are we sending them to school for their CDLs? Do we pay for it, or how is that handled?
CDL school in and of itself, we were handling a portion of it in-house. The rules around getting a CDL have recently changed, and you have to go through the certified accredited school. Slots are extremely limited, and I'm not sure exactly what happened. Tech has about 10 slots available. They actually use our old runway for training and whatnot. We were fortunate at one time and had a person on staff who was a certified trainer, and she was doing weekend classes, coming down, doing weekend classes and training up a lot of our folks to get them moved to the next level. She has since left the county and moved on, so we lost that resource, which now that the law has changed, that was not viable anyway. She could, she could get them trained up, you know, it used to be you could do any kind of training you wanted, and then go to the DMV and take the test, and if you passed the test, you got a CDL. Now you have to have that certificate from a school. But we do have, we've been working with the folks over at Goodwill, and have been sharing that information in my office. They have, and I'm not sure where it came from, it's some kind of grant, I think it's a federal government grant, where they actually can provide, they have like fixed slots in these schools, and we've been putting that out, our folks who were interested in getting that CDL license, so we can use their slots, and they pay for it as well. But we certainly, if we could get slots and it was something we needed, we could certainly entertain paying for that class as well.
There's two types of Class A now coming out of school, which is your automatic and your manual certifications. Do we take both, or do we only take one?
As far as I know, we take both. I think we have both types of trucks, actually.
Do we have automatic transmissions?
Yes, we have some with automatic transmissions, some of the newer trucks, and then some of our slightly-used equipment that we have is still manual transmission.
So if we have somebody moving up in the program that already works for us, wants to get into heavy equipment, I guess we would move them up, but to get the CDL, they would have to go to the school, which they have weekend schools, and the bigger classes, I think, are during the week, four or five weeks. Do we give them time off to do that, or, and again, I might have missed it, do we pay for that?
So we haven't faced that situation yet, but that would be much like we do with a lot of other stuff, like if we have somebody interested in going to paramedic school, we give them the time to go to that school, and that's, it's self-serving. give them the time to go to that school, and that's, it's self-serving, I know, but it's in our best interest to, to make those accommodations for our folks. The days of having that perfectly-minted employee walk in the door with all the bells and ribbons and, and certifications that you require seem to be over. Those days are long gone, and, and we now have to invest in our employees. Now, we do try to, you know, if we're going to go out and spend that money and pay for that school and pay for them to do this training, we, we try to ensure that they're going to stay for a certain length of time.
It's investment.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But there's only so many safeguards you can put in place. Be legal.
Ori Georgetown Tech has a heavy equipment school. Do we not get any applicants out of that?
No, sir.
Or are they already hired in private?
They're, they're hired before they ever start, generally. The, the, the rule of thumb is if you, if you complete the course, D stands for diploma, and if you get yours, you, you've already got a job. Pretty much everything at that, at the trade center part for machinists, mechanics, everything they have, you know, everybody has a job waiting on them before they ever graduate. So another long-range idea, and I haven't brought this forward to the folks at the school districts, I hope they're not listening, back in the olden days when I was in school, we used their, the schools had a program where if you were a senior, you could leave at 11 o'clock and go to your job, whether that be in an auto mechanic shop, or you were working with a bricklayer, or building houses with a carpenter, or even pulpwood harvesting back in those days. And I think that's our next natural progression, is try to get those folks straight out of high school, training them up and have them a spot waiting when, when they are, when they get out of high school.
Good opportunity for some of them to get experience.
Yep.
You know, they might not be with you for 30 years, but...
I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those extremely high-valued skills in the marketplace right now, one that's not going away. I, I know people who are making a lot more money than I make operating heavy equipment these days, so it's, you know, and, and some of the folks that we have, you know, they're, they, they could literally walk out the door any day, and they're those folks that, you know, if you go on the job site, if you ever worked around heavy equipment, if you got some extremely difficult task to do, every crew will say, "That guy needs to do it." And we got about six of those guys. They're more like wizards than operators. So when we lose those, we're going to be, we're going to be in a world of hurt if we don't develop that talent in-house. But, you know, when you do it for 40 years, you get really good at it, so we got a, we got a lot of those sort of veteran folks.
Walt, is this the first apprenticeship that the county has done?
Yes, ma'am.
I hope it's the first of many.
Yes, it's, it's, we're going to have to expand into a lot of other areas. You know, we call the firefighter recruit school, but it's very similar to, to that apprenticeship-type school. And, you know, we do it in the, in the sheriff's office, and we will hire untrained, uncertified people, and we put them through the academy and do all that stuff, but we're going to have to expand in a lot of these other skill areas. We did an AmeriCorps program recently, and I've had some good success with that. We've actually been able to hire a couple of people that came out of that program in our facility services group, so we, that's our future, is, is, that's the way we have to do business.
I encourage you to show the young students coming out of the high school the compound interest of them investing in their retirements at an 18, 17, 18-year-old.
We, um, we actually hit that...
And show them those calculators.
Yeah.
Versus going into debt with the college degrees.
Adults don't understand that.
Yep. We actually have, we have been hiring a lot of 18 to 21-year-olds lately. I'm not sure how that worm exactly turned, but we have marched them through our office on a regular basis, and one thing we hit very, very hard is, you know, yes, you're contributing to your retirement plan, but there's also the deferred comp plan, and we encourage them highly to set money aside, and a lot of our more senior employees help us encourage them, and so there, a lot of them are taking advantage of that. So, you know, we want them to be financially successful as much as we want them to be successful on the job.
Thank you.
Walt, how much does, do we invest in the CDL? Like, if somebody goes to get their CDL, how much does it cost the county to send them to school?
Well, right now, the folks that we've sent, we're sending them on that, on that grant, but that's about a $3,500 class to go to CDL school.
Most, most of them have just moved up from $4,000 to $5,000 if you're off the street.
Yes, sir. It's significant.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Ackerman? Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
Just one more? Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you for bringing that down. Okay, you've heard the proposal, proposal to create a heavy equipment operator apprentice program by our Human Resource Director, Mr. Ackerman. Is there a motion?
They're moved.
It's a motion for establishment of the apprenticeship program. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. So it's moved by Counselor McCall, second by Counselor Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, I think it's a very good step up really to do. We're moving down to our approval of minutes. You have received the minutes in your package from a regular council meeting of September 26, 2023. Is there a motion for adoption of those minutes?
So moved.
It's moved by Counselor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McCall. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Is there any further agenda items to be discussed before council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
It's moved by Counselor Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McCall. All in favor? Any discussion first, though? All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.